Okay, this is the October 5th, 2021 meeting of the East Long Meadow Planning Board. I am required by Mass General Law to inform everyone that this meeting is being recorded by LCAT, and if there's anyone in the audience who might be recording the meeting, would you please push the hand for the Zoom call and you can be brought into the meeting and recognized and let us know how you might be recording this meeting?
I don't see anybody.
Okay, apparently there are none, so we'll bring this back. So in attendance this evening are myself, Russell Denver, member George Kingston, member Pete Punderson, member John Torsia, and member Cassandra Sarswello. We are joined by the Director of Planning and Community Development, Bethany Yao as well. So the first order of business would be the acceptance. John, do you want to read that?
Yes, the acceptance of the September 21st, 2021 minutes.
So I hope everyone's had an opportunity to review them. Anyone have any comments or suggestions? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
So move, George, Pete, whatever. Pete moved it, I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call. Ms. Sarswello?
Aye.
Mr. Torsia?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Mr. Torsia, first item, please?
Item number one, site plan reviews, case SPRW 2021-44, request for site plan review waiver for Treehouse, a first step learning center incorporated in childcare facility at 310 Maple Street, Assessors Parcel ID 6-120B-D in the Residence C zoning district. Applicant Jennifer McIlian, 310 Maple Street, East Long Meadow, MA.
So I see Jennifer and Wayne, am I correct? So you're muted. Can you unmute? Okay, all right. Thank you. Thanks for joining us. So just tell us a little bit about what you're planning to do there.
Yes, so we're planning to open a large childcare program. The previous location had enrollment of up to 58. That would be our eventual plan, but of course we'll start much smaller. We'll have before and after school as well.
And how long have you been in this industry?
I've been operating a home childcare in my home in East Long Meadow for nine years.
Okay.
Prior to that, I have an additional five to six years in childcare.
Okay, great. Okay. Questions from the board?
This is you're taking over the existing business, basically.
Correct, but she did shut down right around the time of COVID. So in March of 2020, she did shut down and has not reopened.
Okay.
At the childcare.
And do you know how long that business operated for?
Over 30 years.
Yeah, okay, great. Any other questions from the board?
No.
I see Joan Taft, who is brought in.
Ross, that was my mistake. She's the next item.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sorry.
So hearing no other questions, so I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. A motion to approve by roll call. Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Ms. Sarswello?
Aye.
Mr. Torsia?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Best of luck to you there.
Thank you very much.
Certainly badly needed, so best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Hey, Russ?
Yes?
Just one sec. John, can you turn your volume up somehow? I can't hear you.
Sure, is this a little bit better?
That's a little better. Everybody else is fine. You're very muted. On my machine at least.
Yeah, no, he is, yeah.
Okay, all right.
It's better.
It's better?
It's a little better, yeah.
Little better. But the next item, Mr. Torsia?
All right, case, item number two, case SPRW 2021-45, request for site plan waiver for EJ Associates Incorporated, DBA Off Fuel, a heating oil and HVAC company at 507 North Main Street, Assessors Parcel ID 1-16-2, in the business zoning district, applicant EJ Associates Incorporated, PO Box 345, East Long Meadow, MA.
Is the applicant or petitioner available?
Yes, here we are.
Can you see us?
Yes, thank you. Welcome, welcome to the new Zoom world for public meetings, so.
For all people.
Tell us about your application and what you're planning to do.
Well, we really aren't going to do anything different than we've done. It's just we needed a business certificate for, we're changing banks, that's all.
Okay, wow, that's pretty easy then. Okay. Questions from the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
So move, George.
Second, second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call. Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Ms. Sarswello?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torsia?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well.
Thank you so.
How easy was that?
That was very easy.
Take care. Best of luck to you.
You too. Bye.
Mr. Torsia?
All right, item number three, case SPRW 2021-46, request for site plan waiver for a home office at 24 Forest Hills Road, Assessors Parcel ID 58-26-0, on a .46 plus or minus acre site in the Residence A zoning district, applicant Bruce LeRiviera, 24 Forest Hills Road, East Long Meadow, MA.
I don't have Mr. LeRiviera in the list, do I? Maybe? I do not.
Bethany, can you tell us a little bit about this applicant and what they're trying to do?
Sure, just a moment here. So this is a home office for handyman services. The name would be LeRiviera Home Repair. There's no commercial vehicle listed, and hours of operation would be nine to five, no customers or employees.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I don't think we usually make any motions about the person, the applicant here to discuss things.
Yeah, I'd like to hear a little more. It's a home improvement business?
It could lead to other things, so he needs to be, the person needs to be aware.
Then do I hear a motion to continue to our next meeting?
We don't need to continue it because it's not a hearing.
Okay, great, okay. All right. Next item, Mr. Torsia?
All right, item number four, continued public hearings, case site 2021-9, 235 Dwight Road, request for site plan review for an addition of approximately 3,275 square feet to the existing state formation center hall at 235 Dwight Road, parcel ID 2-29-0, on a plus or minus 235,761 square foot site in the Residence C zoning district. Applicant, St. Paul the Apostle, Roman Catholic Church, 235 Dwight Road, Springfield, MA, CEO, Casella Design Associates LLC, 200 Shoemaker Lane, Agawam, MA, continued from 9:21.
So before we proceed with this, I think we need to take a little step back and kind of reconvene a little bit. We did make some representations that this board would look into a number of the issues associated with what was brought up by specifically the neighbors, specifically about noise issues, traffic issues, and the like. So we tasked Bethany with kind of researching what has taken place and what would need to take place. But I want to just stress to absolutely everyone on this call, under no circumstances did anyone say we were going to make the street one way, and that was a done deal, or that we were going to stop this or stop that. We said we would look into things and be able to report back at our next meeting. So I'm going to ask Bethany to kind of let everybody in the audience know what we found out and what process would need to take place, should the neighbors wish to do one thing or another related to traffic. Bethany?
Sure, thanks, Russ. So just a quick recap, DPW did sign off on the plans that no longer in outstanding condition. As far as traffic goes, the police department records, well, traffic and noise complaints, the police department records over the last five years had about six calls regarding music complaints specifically related to St. Paul's Church, and all complaints were made after 10:00 PM as well. We didn't receive any information as far as traffic complaints regarding or specifically related to St. Paul's Church. If you have traffic complaints, the best course of action is to file a report with the police department. This helps them gather information about where they need to do speed summary reports and how they can best address the issues. So the police department and the town manager's office are your first steps if you want to help create some change in your neighborhood. I did look into some potential solutions that other communities have done regarding congestion around streets adjacent to places of worship. There is a method called the Sunday Solution, or nicknamed the Sunday Solution, which involves turning a street into a one-way during the Sunday morning hours. Usually that's just with signage and enforcement with the local police. I wouldn't suggest that without substantial data. Usually it's crash data, there's a lot of vehicle accidents or collisions with vehicles parked on the streets, and that prompts the Sunday Solution. Speed bumps were also suggested as a possible solution to alleviate the traffic concerns. Speed bumps are no longer recommended by traffic as a traffic calming device by the Institute of Transport Engineers. They also make plowing difficult during the winter months, degrade pavement conditions, and have a detrimental effect on stormwater runoff. So I guess the first course of action is to make your reports to the police department so they can create a database and see where the issue is and how best to address it.
And I'll just add, so a town counselor was watching our meeting two weeks ago, heard the concerns of the neighbors, brought their concerns to the chair of the licensing committee of the town council, who now is aware of the neighborhood's concerns about noise issues specifically after 10:00. It was our understanding that a number of the weddings had been allowed to go on until 11:30. So at least now, members of the town council that make the decisions on things like liquor licensing, you know, will at least have that information at their fingertips when they make decisions on applications for those type of things. The other thing, Bethany, I'd like you to address is why is this a site plan rather than a special permit?
It's not a special permit because churches are permitted in this zoning district. They're pretty much allowed in every zoning district in East Long Meadow. So that is why the planning board cannot regulate the use, how the space or site is used specifically.
Great, okay. So this is a continuation of a public hearing. Before I reopen the public hearing or continue the public hearing, is there anyone from the board that has any comments or suggestions or questions of the petitioner? Okay, hearing none. So for people in the audience, after you've heard what your, you know, the procedures that we checked into, the information that we found out about, that, you know, the one thing I do want to add is obviously, so as we've really come to know, the streets in question, at least Admiral and Athens, we believe are both in Springfield and East Long Meadow. So for any traffic issues to take place, I think both communities would have to approve that. Certainly, I'm sure it could be done maybe, or maybe not, but it does add a layer of complexity. So I'm going to open it to the public, I'm going to limit it to whether you have concerns about the building itself, not the use of the building, because the use is allowed as right under the town zoning. So if there's anyone who would like to be heard on this, and remember, we're going to limit it to the building, not traffic and not noise. So. Mr. Mackey, do we have anybody?
Yes, Ms. Ireland was on her way in.
Okay.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, thank you so much for the information and doing all of that research. I really sincerely appreciate that. Just a couple of things I wanted to bring up then. I believe at the last meeting, someone brought up the trucks that were there.
Yeah. Good, Mr. Casella, did you look into that, whether they were owned by the church or whether they were being stored there by someone?
I was told that those are, excuse me, Ray Casella for the petitioner. I was told that those were church trucks, but those trucks can go elsewhere if they have to.
Okay, all right. Ms. Ireland, do you have more?
So that was mostly my question, just because I heard about, you know, the shielding and such, and I just wondered if that was something that's been relevant. I just have another question, and it's maybe out of ignorance, but I'm, as a member of the Catholic Church in town here in East Long Meadow, from how I understand it, we have, you know, our rec center, which doesn't really hold with the COVID amount, the amount of children that were in CCD at, like, Burchland, you know, since that was such a huge reason that they were saying that this was, this huge addition is needed, why is it not a possibility to use one of the, you know, 40 schools or so in Springfield, kind of like we did with St. Michael's, to use Burchland, so they had the classrooms, and then they've moved it to the rec center, and they kind of stagger it, so certain kids go certain days and stuff like that. So we kind of do that in our own town. This seemed to be such a reason, from what I felt at the last meeting. I just don't understand why, you know, our Catholic Church does it, but it's not a possibility for a town, you know, a neighboring town, to do maybe the same thing. You know, I understand that things changed with COVID and such, but it just kind of, I just don't understand how that works that way.
Yeah, it's a wonderful question. I don't think it's one that this planning board could answer. And I did learn a very long time ago, having been a member of a school committee for Our Lady of Hope Church in Springfield, that each church is a benevolent dictatorship, and they can make their own decisions. And that comes from a very famous movie, Chariot of Fire, so I can tell you that. So I think they can each pretty much operate in the mayor in which they believe best represents their congregation, so.
Okay.
And even though I'm a lawyer, I've never done canon law, nor would I want to do canon law.
It's its own thing, I guess, apparently, from what I'm standing. So, you know, I was just hoping if that is, if that is the, you know, it seemed to be the main argument, and I would absolutely never take a religious education from anyone. That is never what we were upset about. It was, I'm glad that there has been some research done and that there have been calls, and, you know, certain other times, people didn't call, they walked over and stuff, and, you know, I was really grateful that you guys put that out there, and hopefully we can try to find some kind of peace among our neighbors, because we are all neighbors here, you know, and that's what's been very sad.
Yeah, we're very, we're very lucky to have someone like Bethany Yao as the Director of Planning and Community Development. She does very thorough follow-through, so we're very fortunate to have her.
Absolutely. So basically, you know, I just, you know, I understand that there's different rules for the churches to everywhere else, but like, you know, I kind of looked at the truck issue as like, you know, that was brought up last time. I waited until today to make sure that they haven't been touched, and it's kind of how we've been dealing with things here. It's really, you know, as a neighborly way of doing things, and you guys specifically asking, and it being completely ignored, I think completely points out exactly with what we're dealing with here, and why.
Well, we did, so I did get a message through Zoom. So Bethany, do you want to weigh in on that? We asked the building inspector to look at that. So do you want to weigh in on what he had, he found?
Yeah, I did check with him. They are not violation on the church property.
Okay, so they can park vehicles?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and my other quick question is, with the amount of additional people that this structure will be housing, they say that they're adding 16 parking spaces. I've looked at the plans, I'm by far not an expert, but.
No, they did not say they're adding parking spaces. They said even with the addition, they had sufficient parking. Am I correct, Mr. Casella? Just shake your head.
Correct, yes, okay.
Okay, so there's sufficient parking, so it's not that they'll be building a larger parking lot. It's even though it's going to be built on the parking lot, you'll still have sufficient parking. Okay, so is there any real reason why there's parking, like, up and down the streets and on the grass and stuff on Sundays as it is up until this past Sunday? You know, why that's happening already now?
I'm not qualified to answer where they do park. The simple answer is the zoning regulations require a certain number of parkings on the property, and the church does comply with the number of parking spaces. If people choose to park outside, I again would direct that towards the police department. If people are parking illegally, then that's, the police should come and ticket those vehicles.
I don't know if it's illegal or not. I'm just noticing, you know, you notice the amount of cars up on the lawn and stuff. You know, I do notice it. That's why I was questioning or saying there's enough parking, but it's kind of been, you know, something that we see, and then the side streets have brought up, there's been cars across into Springfield. We're right on the line here, so it's really, it's really close. So they're believing there's enough parking, there will be no added additional parking lot, and they'll have enough parking at, because I thought whenever the plan, it said 135, and that it would go up to a certain amount. Are they changing the design of the parking lot?
They're removing, they're removing certain places, they're adding parking, they're reconfiguring at the front of the building. So yes, all those numbers were reviewed by DPW and by our civil engineers, who are obviously licensed within the Commonwealth to do so, and those numbers are correct, and we do stand by those. And they were reviewed by the building inspector also, so I'm not criticizing anybody, I'm just saying that the numbers are as we stated, and we stand by those numbers.
So they're not adding additional parking pavement down on the grounds?
There is less pavement now than there, there will be less pavement when the work is done than there is now. That is correct.
And the parking will be sufficient for that size building?
Under the zoning bylaws, yes.
Okay, that was my question, I understand it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, okay. Anyone else like to be heard on this item?
I see no other hands, Russ.
Okay, so hearing none, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Come on, John. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none by roll call. Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torsia?
Aye.
Ms. Sarswello?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. So bringing back to the board, any other questions of the applicant?
I wish, we're from DPW, they're happy with the plan. I have no additional questions.
So I guess, not hearing any, I would just kind of leave it with this, Mr. Casella. Obviously, obviously, there's some real legitimate concerns, I think, based upon the information we got from the police department about the noise complaints and them having to respond. There appears to be just some lines of communication that don't exist, and we would certainly wish that there be outreach so that there's a much more harmonious relationship among everyone involved. So if there's no other questions, no other comments, do I have a motion to approve?
So move, George.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. So by roll call, Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Ms. Sarswello?
Aye.
Mr. Torsia?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Okay, this item passes. Mr. Torsia, next item, please?
All right, case number five, case BN 2021-03, ground-mounted photovoltaic insulation bylaw amendment for the purpose of amending and clarifying the town of East Long Meadow's zoning bylaws, section 7.5, ground-mounted photovoltaic installations scheduled uses, section 3.041, ground-mounted photovoltaic arrays, by adding language permitting ground-mounted photovoltaic installations in Residence zoning district. Petitioner, East Long Meadow Planning Board, continued from 9:21, 2021.
So this is, we continued this public hearing?
We actually continued it to 6:30, so we have about five minutes here.
Okay, so 6:30. So here's, so let's talk conceptually, okay? So I am having just a difficult time, and please excuse my ignorance on it. So are we down to the point, Bethany, where you can only have a ground-mounted solar if you have two acres or more? And if that is the case, do we have visual screening slash barriers required from, you know, from the neighbors and from the public way to the ground-mounted?
Yes, that's essentially the concept, the numbers are, we can change them if two acres is not settling well with the board.
So I guess the question, so it begs the question, how many two-acre lots do we have in East Long Meadow? And, but compared to, so I think at one time I saw something like we had, just call it 6,000 lots in East Long Meadow. And you say it might be a lot, is it 2,000, 3,000, 4,000? And if it's less than 2,000, is it again restrictive? Because that's what we were called out for, from the land court judge. So, I mean, you say a lot, George, do you know? Do you know what that number is?
I don't have a number. I would say it's definitely in the 10s, maybe up to 100. If you look at the agricultural parcels in town?
Okay.
Okay, and a lot of those are more than one parcel, okay? Where someone may own three or four parcels and operate them together. There's a lot of land that's owned by the utility along the southern border, and that sort of thing. So, yeah, I would say there's definitely 10s. I don't know if it reaches up to 100 or not, but it's a lot of acreage, is all I would say.
So let's call it, just for the sake of it, let's call it 200. And if it's 200 out of 6,000, is that, does that continue to be too restrictive?
I would hope not.
Yeah.
I can, I can check with the town attorney.
No, let Bethany continue for a second, but I want to speak afterwards. Go ahead, Bethany.
I was going to say, I can check with the town attorney and see if he has an idea or if it's been discussed, what, how restrictive is too restrictive, seeing as we thought we were in the clear before, and we don't want to run into that situation again. So that's definitely something I will check out.
We should be able to get a number from the assessors, because they should be able to run their database and go, you know, how many are over two acres?
So I guess, just Pete, before I call on you, I mean, so the thing is, if there's a subjective view of what's restricted, we'd like to know maybe how the courts have weighed in on that. And that might help us develop something that would withstand a challenge, you know, if it's a numerical number, if it's a percentage. I don't know. Pete?
Okay, well, first of all, we wrote the bylaw, we made it restrictive to protect the residents of East Long Meadow, plain and simple. And that was approved by the Attorney General's Office, and was flushed down the toilet by the courts, overturning the Attorney General's Office and overturning the desires of a town and the board that made the bylaw. So that doesn't sit well, first of all.
Right.
I had an idea in the discussion with a person the other day, that maybe we ought to restrict it to the size of the solar system is to fit the needs of one structure, the structure that is going to be connected to. Then you're not restricting it by size, you're not restricting it by anything, you're restricting it by the use of the household, which doggone can't be too restrictive. It's just, you want to put solar up for yourself, or maybe a. Or maybe a 20% oversizing so that you can sell some back to the state or to the utilities? I don't know. Doing it by landmass, I don't think is going to work. I think by the, by the usage of the house, then you've got yourself a pretty good deal. Pretty sound box.
That's creative. Yeah.
I, I think that's, we've got two different issues here. One is what Pete's bringing up. If I want to put solar in my backyard to power my house, then I shouldn't be able to put in four times as much as I need. But also there are parcels in, within the residential area that are big enough for an industrial sized solar array. And I think the courts would, would hit us if we said, no, you can't put an industrial sized solar array there. That's where they got us. Was in the industrial, in the residential zone, but in a large parcel in a remote area, if you will. And, and I think those are two different issues. We need to deal with them both. If we want to deal with home solar, that's a separate issue than dealing with industrial solar.
So I, I guess that begs the logistical question. So don't most people that want solar for their home just do rooftop solar? And wouldn't that just kind of supersede the need for ground mounted?
Yeah, but you have issues though, Russ. You have issues with putting a roof on afterwards. It's easier to put it in your backyard on a pedestal that turns with the sun. It'd be infinitely easier. A little more expensive, maybe. I don't know, but it, it doesn't involve your roof and holes in the roof and having to re-roof your roof and, you know. But that way there would have to be screened absolutely from the neighbors.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, I could see George's point also that they may say, well, then you haven't provided any way for a commercial company to put a solar project up in a two acre lot. I don't know.
Yeah.
The one way certainly to do it is to limit it to, let's say, 120% or 125% of the usage of, of the structure. Just so they could sell, sell some back, that's all. And it doesn't, it doesn't seem reasonable.
Yeah. So I'd like to hear from John or Cassie, given that they are, I know Cassie is a homeowner as well. And shall we just be polite and say she's much younger than the three of us? So what, what do you think newer homeowners are, are thinking of something like this in town? Any idea?
So personally, I've looked at solar. Right now it's a little cost prohibitive because of the roof thing. But I would, I know that like the solar that I've looked at, you can now get the the boxes, like the generators that go in your basement. So you overproduce and then it has the self storing generator, but you can also sell it back. So I think the, if you were to do the cap, okay, like you can do 120% like what Pete was saying. That makes sense, but then how it's also restrictive, I understand. So maybe it could be if, if like either or, like if it's under two acres, then this, and if it's over, then this. So it's, it's not super restrictive. Like you could fall into either category. Because like my house is on a half acre. So I, by this, I couldn't have the ones in my yard if I wanted to. But I don't have a neighbor in the lot behind me, so there wouldn't be like the, you know, like the, the buffering or whatever it is. Like they wouldn't be obstructing someone's view necessarily in the back.
John, do you want to add something?
Yeah, you know, I mean, the biggest thing to me is, you know, and it's already been obviously discussed before, but we got to find something that can kind of satisfy legally, you know, that's the only reason why we're here to begin with. We did have, I felt, strong by law to begin with. That was proved by the town, by the Attorney General. I would tend to lean, I, I kind of like Pete's idea. I think it gives, it does, I feel like gives most homeowners freedom and flexibility. They can sell some back. Everyone would be allowed to have it. But, you know, unless you have some type of massive house or massive operation, you know, you would not be having, I would get a large solar array in your backyard or wherever you put it. So that might be the route. But again, I mean, the, the biggest thing will happen to be making sure we don't have some judge down the road that finds what we're doing too restrictive again. So that's the biggest factor.
So, so Bethany, I know you shared a best practices. So local communities that have had, that have solar bylaws that more accurately reflect, you know, the culture of East Long Meadow as far as like the demographics and so forth. What, what are you seeing from those communities?
I'd have to go back and check. It's not as fresh in my mind at the moment. And I will check in with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission too, because they were very involved in that process. And so they might have the, the better connections of, of communities that have recently implemented or changed their, their solar bylaws to include residential. But it's helpful to have your feedback in terms of where is a good place to start and that will help me get some research over to you.
I, I think all the comments tonight have been absolutely wonderful and certainly a variety of different opinions. Go ahead, Pete.
I like what Cassandra said. If you don't have two acres, it's limited to, let's say, 120, 125% of the usage of the house. What we need to find out is physically, what can you put on two acres and how much power does it generate? We need to know that figure. That's something we need to research and find out because you want to know if a, a two acre site is a viable site for a commercial person to invest in for the, for the return on investment. So I think we need to really definitely find out what goes on a two acre site because you have, if you have two acres, you have to have a buffer. And you have to have your electrical, electrical equipment, which is a concrete pad with the inverters and all that stuff. And that's that polls come in to transfer the electricity from the inverter to wherever it's going to go to. So I think we really need to know that before we make a, not another mistake, but before we're told that what our thinking is not right. So we need to research that definitely. And then if it's, if it's not a, if a two acre site isn't something that a commercial person is going to look at, they're recovered. And then if it's under two acres, you, you're allowed to 100 whatever percent to cover your house and some sell back. I mean, that, that kind of covers it. But we need to know what goes on two acres because you're going to have, George, how much of a buffer would you need on two acre site? 25 feet on each side? Or is it 50 feet or?
You're muted, George.
If it's well vegetated, yeah. I mean, the, the thing I, that bothers me is drive out to Hampden on Hamp, uh, not Hampden Road, but the one Yeah. And you see that field there with this ugly fence around it. Okay, yeah, that's not what you want.
But that's more than two acres though, too.
It's more than two acres, but the point is the buffer, there's still really, really no buffer. There's an ugly fence is all there is. Okay.
My idea is, my idea is to
Hold on, Pete. Hold on, let him finish.
That's just not what you want in a residential neighborhood. Okay.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I, my point was if, if a two acre site will only produce X amount of power, is that enough to make somebody to go in and do the investment for the rate of return on it? I have no idea. I went to school for this, but I don't know what two acres covers. I just don't know. And there's also technology coming along. So one of these six by three panels is going to be able to produce the same power in like a, a six by four piece. So somebody could really come in with new technology and on a two acre site generate a whole lot of power and have the poles and have all the structures and all the wires and all that. So we're going to have to really watch it here.
Okay.
You also need to think about whatever site you choose has got to be accessible to the grid. You can't just plug into, you know, the regular power line and feed back to the grid. You really need to be accessible to a higher voltage system. And, and that's limiting in, in some cases.
Well, that was part of my point. In order to transmit it to wherever it needed to go to, you got to, you have to bring all that in. And then the residential neighborhood, I mean, you're talking a substantial structure. All the lines, you're talking the big pad, you're talking all the electrical equipment. It'd be awful. It'd be terrible.
So Bethany, has this been helpful? Has this?
Yeah, absolutely.
Be a lot of different things to look at. Certainly, you know, I'm going to kind of wrap this up. So one, one thing, you know, obviously, what everybody said, we need you to look at further, obviously, number one. We would love to get a, some type of opinion maybe from town council, if that's allowed by, by the town manager on, I guess, is there a subjective or non-subjective, what's too restrictive for the courts based upon maybe what the ruling was in the disaster that was PLH? So you can look at that. And, and you said our, this has been continued to a public hearing until when?
Um, until
The 19th?
Uh, yes, it would be.
Hey, Bethany? Make a little, little suggestion here. Maybe you should get in touch with the person that teaches the course at STIC. I don't know if it's the same person. There's a very, very great individual and would have the answers for you, I'm sure, very quickly.
I was just thinking, I need a crash course in solar.
Well, the, the course takes quite a while, but if you discuss it with the person, then tell them this is what we're doing. What can you fit on two acres? And just find out, they're, they're going to know.
And George, does, does Pioneer Valley Planning Commission have a solar person expert?
I'm sure they do because they headed up the, the best practices thing. And so I'm sure they've got somebody there. I would just call the director and, and ask who it's supposed to be and, you know, or look at the website to, to move that. I, I do have a couple of nicks to pick with the draft that we have.
Yep.
If I could just bring those up. Section 7.5.11, area dimension density requirements still references the industrial garden district, which would indicate that there are no requirements for any other district. And so I think that needs to be corrected. Also, we need the schedule of uses and the schedule of the, the table of dimensions that go with this. Because those are part of the bylaw. And if we're going to adopt a new bylaw, we need to have both the proposed new schedule of uses and table of dimensions. So that's all consistent. Okay. Minor things
Yep.
will keep us in trouble.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm going to end this, this, end this discussion. Mr. Torsia, what's the next item?
You haven't opened the public hearing yet, Russ.
Well, we continued the public hearing until the 19th from the last meeting.
Oh, did we? Okay, fine.
I'm sorry, you continued it to tonight's meeting. So you would need to open it. I don't think
Okay. All right. I thought you had told us we continue until the 19th. So I opened the public hearing to anyone who might be in the audience who wishes to discuss this.
There is nobody in the audience.
All right. So should we continue the public hearing again to the 19th?
Motion, continue to the 19th.
At seven, at 6:30.
6:30?
I will, I will second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. To continue the public hearing by roll call, Mr. Kingston?
Hi.
Mr. Torsia?
Hi.
Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Hi.
Mr. Punderson?
Hi.
And I'm a yes as well. Mr. Torsia, next item.
Next item is the director's report.
So Beth, before we get into that, Bethany, I just want to give my, my, my thanks to the extraordinary efforts of two planning board members, Mr. Punderson and Ms. Sarah Swallow for making the really great effort under difficult circumstances to attend our last meeting. So I, I greatly appreciated. We needed you in attendance and you worked miracles. So thank you very much.
I think Cassandra had a lot harder time than I did. Definitely. I was at the comforts of my motorhome. There was no problem at all.
Greatly appreciate it. And I guess we wouldn't have been able to do that without Zoom. So it does come in handy sometimes. So, okay. Bethany, the floor is yours.
Sure. So a quick staffing update. I have hired Nina Fazio as the new administrative assistant. Nina grew up in East Long Meadow. She was also our summer intern for our conservation commission last summer. She's a recent graduate from Connecticut College with a bachelor's in environmental studies as a social science and a minor in government and public policy. She also shadowed me earlier this summer, so she's very familiar with how the department works and I think she'll be a really good fit. She will be starting on October 12th, so next week. That's my staff update and we'll be at the next meeting. And I think that's it for announcements for now. I know that I will be putting the mention of the rail trail on the next meeting agenda, as George suggested, to just get people in tune with what's going on there and the advancements that we're making.
Okay. Any other items? Anyone? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Beat you to it.
Second, time for dinner.
Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call. Mr. Denver, yes. Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
Mr. Torsia?
Yeah.
Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Yes.
Good night, everybody. Have a great night. Take care.